Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, May 18, 2015, and we are 35 years from the volcano that erupted at St. Helens. So just thought I'd share that with everybody. With that, Walter?
Would you please rise and join the mayor and council in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Walter. I have a Memorial Day proclamation that I would like to read. Whereas Memorial Day, originally called Decoration Day, is a day of remembrance for those who died in our nation's service; and whereas Memorial Day was initially proclaimed on May 5, 1868, by General John Logan, National Commander of the Grand Army of the Republic in his General Order Number 11; and whereas Memorial Day was first observed on May 30, 1868, when flowers were placed on the graves of Union and Confederate soldiers at Arlington National Cemetery; and whereas our predecessors fought in wars so that our future generations would have freedom; and whereas they helped shape society that we know today, including our political, economic, military, and social systems, advancements in science and technology, and cultural traditions that enrich our heritage; and whereas it is important on Memorial Day to reflect on whole life memories of military personnel who fought and died for our country, to preserve the rights guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution and keep our nation strong; and whereas Memorial Day gives us the opportunity to renew our patriotism and to articulate our common desire to live in freedom and seek peace, so that our nation's veterans will not have died in vain. Now therefore, I Bill Lambert, the mayor of the city of Moscow, Idaho, do recognize May 25, 2015, as Memorial Day, and the city and I would all citizens to honor those who have died to the service of their country. And I do not -- do I have anybody here? I guess I do not have anybody here to receive this. So we will move on with the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dan and a second by Art to approve the consent agenda as it is. I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay. And we will move on. That will be passed. Okay, staff recognition report. Gary, you have anything tonight?
Your Honor, we're waiting to stack them up, so we'll have a big show for next night.
Okay. All right. Moving on, Mayor O'Neil's appointment. I have got one commission appointment that I'd like to bring in front of the council, and it is Lauren McClary for the Moscow Arts Commission with an expiration date of 12/31/2018.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve this appointment.
I second it.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dan and a second by John to approve Lauren McClary, Moscow Arts Commission. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. We're clipping right along. Okay, now it's time for public comment and a response period for members of the public that would like to address this. As long as there is nothing before planning and zoning, or the Board of Adjustments, or anything that is on our agenda tonight, feel free to come up and speak. And let me introduce your remarks to three minutes, please. Seeing nobody rushed the podium, I will move on with item number five, which is a request for Architectural Services Library Exterior Restoration Project. Dwight Curtis and Jay Lewis are here to present to us.
Good evening. Thank you. A while back, in the fiscal year 15 budget process, we had a library exterior restoration project budgeted for $37,000. We had an estimate from a local contractor on that. As we got time to initiate that, he backed out and was only willing to do City Hall and not the library. It was a kind of a combined contract. And so, we needed to go out and get some new bids on that. And through that process, various contractors gave us differing opinions, as well as noticed a lot more work that needed to be done besides what we had originally thought needed to be done. And it got to a point where we thought we needed to get this specked out by a professional, so we knew exactly what it was that needed to be done over there, so we could plan accordingly and get the work done that's necessary. Through that, the City Hall project is still scheduled, and that's just under $10,000. The estimates that came in by other contractors with the new bid went upwards of $114,000. So, I mean, that's a considerable jump from the original $37,000. So, you can see why we had an issue there. And so, with that, we're proposing to have a consultant go and give us a full spectrum of what needs to happen over there. And that comes in at $13,530.68. And so, in a nutshell, that's where we're at. I do have Jay if he has some technical questions I can't answer, but we really did feel that we can't do this with -- we can't figure this out without some help on this one. It's just bigger than our own expertise. And that's what we're requesting is the authorization to contract with CastellaCom.
Okay. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Gary, and I believe I asked this one at committee last Monday. Hold that thought. Let me ask Dwight one, and then I'll ask Gary the second one. Dwight, last week, we inquired as to whether or not anyone knew why the quoting contractor at $37,000 had decided not to do it. Do you all have any better information a week later?
I can tell you that it had nothing really to do with the city. It was personal on his side and what he thought he could handle under the circumstances that he was under with his business.
So, your belief is that the price we were quoted, had other things not occurred, he would have done the work for that number?
Oh, yes. The problem is, we would have still had these other issues there that he hadn't identified.
Okay.
So, and that's kind of the scary part of this. You know, in hindsight, we probably should have had it scoped out to begin with. It seemed like a simple enough project to begin with. City Hall's makeup is a little different than the library. But I've worked with sandstone before in the last job I had, and it can get complicated very quickly, and as well as the supporting structure that's above it. So, yeah, we probably should have scoped it sooner. But it just, at the time, it just seemed simple enough, and then it just, it went from there.
Okay.
So, we would have likely ended up where we're at now, just not the sandstone it would have been in addition to that, so.
Okay. If I may?
Sure.
Gary?
Yes, sir.
If we go ahead and approve this tonight, and the scope of work creates a $100,000 project, can we pay for it? Or does it go on the shelf until we figure out where to find the money? I mean, what position does this study put us in, I guess is my question?
Of course, depending upon the magnitude, will determine if we budget it in future years, or whether we can move funding around to try and do it, so no further damage accrues to the library. Really, as I indicated last week, Walter, it's the same answer, and that is, depends on the magnitude of it. I mean, if this thing gets scoped out, it's in the same ballpark as the original quote, we might be able to swing it. If it's much more than that, I would suspect we'll be addressing it in the FY 2017 budget.
And a final question, if I may?
Go ahead, Walter.
The $13,500 for the consultant that's before us tonight, is that going to effectively come out of the $37,000 we had available to do the work before we lost the contractor?
Yeah, $5,000 of it will. Remember, we reallocated, council reappropriated, reallocated the bulk of that funding for the emergency repairs to the swimming pool roof project. So, we kept $5,000 in there, I guess, hopefully thinking that, or wishfully thinking, that an architect's services for the library would be more akin to $5,000 than it was the $13,500. Obviously, we undershot that a little bit. But we were able to find $4,800 on a flooring project in another building that we were able to delay, and the balance of about $3,800 can be identified out of General Fund Capital Projects Building. So, we can piece funding together for it.
For the consultant?
For the consultant, not necessarily for the project.
Thank you.
Wayne?
Excuse me for having missed a meeting. However, perhaps this question was asked and perhaps not. Why are we talking about hiring a consultant, an architect, to scope the building and do an assessment on the condition of the building and what needs to be done? My thoughts are that possibly if it was in the private sector, that this would not be a step that would be taken. You would get a hold of a contractor that's qualified to do this type of finishing work and repair work, and get a contract price from them, as far as what needs to be done. So, I'm having a difficult time with $13,530, just to ask an architect to tell us what's wrong with the building.
Dwight, you want to?
Well, as I indicated earlier, what we were -- I mean, that was the approach we took. I mean, we had the companies come over and do their assessments, and they were all different. They all had different opinions. And so, I mean, which one do you do? And then come back and have to redo it again because they missed something. I mean, we were very comfortable with the original contractor, and based on everybody else that's been over there, I mean, they missed all kinds of stuff. And to their defense, we didn't ask them to go beyond that either. But, you know, when you're building a foundation, and there's a house on it, or going to be a house on it, you've got to look at the whole thing. And so, that's what we have over there, is you have other things that are interconnected, and you need to fix them.
If I may?
Gary?
Additionally, and I apologize, there was an attachment that didn't make it in the -- it was passed out last week and not this week. There is a letter from CastellaCom that lays out the scope of the work, which includes an existing condition assessment, measured-as-built drawings, materials investigation, project manual, drawings, cost model, visiting services, construction admin services, and warranty services. So, and again, as Dwight indicated, and I think he told the group last Monday, that this sort of sandstone construction, although it isn't all that common out here, is very common in the Midwest. It's technical. When you have weathered sandstone, it takes special epoxies and elements to reface those. CastellaCom has experience on this type of masonry at the University of Idaho. They've done a bunch of projects up there with older buildings. So, when the original contractor, who's very experienced in this, very experienced mason with this sort of thing, pulled out, and Jay started getting quotes from other contractors, and they were all over the board, it was pretty clear that there wasn't a real understanding, or at least there was a huge disparity of expertise in the masons in the area.
Okay. Walter?
Gary, following up on that, if the mason who gave us the quote had a lot of experience with sandstone, why did he miss so much that needed to be done?
I can't say, Walter. Maybe he was going to do a lot of the job for nothing.
And Dwight, didn't you mention that there was a lot of things you didn't point out, or you guys didn't have him go on or something?
Right. Yeah, he was more focused on just the sandstone, where some of this is beyond the sandstone issues that basically are connected but not part of the same. But we would have ended up with the same problem just later. Just, we just would have. And I can't explain how that happened. I just can't explain that. It just is.
This is more in line of a comment than a question, but I'm not going to be surprised if we get a pretty good six-figure number to repair the library when we hire a consultant to tell us what really needs to be done to it.
Art?
Alternatively, we don't know what it is that we don't know. And at least if we have the architect, go forth and do the assessment, we can at least rank the degree of severity and what needs to be addressed and what order, if it doesn't necessarily have to happen all at once. So, I think we have to get the information that we're going to need to manage this project at the outset, rather than trying to piecemeal it blindly through time.
Jim's got a question.
I wanted to ask Dwight if he felt that if we spend $13,000 on assessing the situation, you feel that that's money well spent in order to prevent a problem? If we don't spend this, and we take a chance on getting it fixed, and then we find something, is it going to be worth way more than $13,000 to fix that at some point in the future, in your opinion?
I wouldn't bet my wages on just somebody coming down there without this, to say there's not going to be another problem if we don't. We wouldn't have brought this to you if we hadn't thought that.
And as, in addition to that, there is a warranty thing on this, so that if his assessment of that turns out to be in error, somehow that that's insured? If they, if we're paying these guys to miss something, they're backing up their work that we found everything that needs to be done here, and there's not going to be another $50,000 that we don't know about?
I would leave that to the attorneys to answer.
John, did you have something, John?
Well, the only thing I have, Bill, is it appears to me, having read this and gone through the other meeting, that the original contractor that we didn't go through a bidding process said, "I can do this for this amount of money." And then he said, "I can't do it for whatever reason." And the other people that were brought in said, "Well, I can do this for $114,000." And so, we've got this for $37,000, we've got this for $114,000. And up here, we really don't know what either one of these "this's" are, as far as, is this enough to get the job done? And if we hire a consultant, and as you well know, I'm not really in favor of hiring a lot of consultants, but in this particular case, I would have no idea, looking at the building, what needed to be done, what didn't need to be done. And I think that this architect should be able to tell us what they think should be done, and then what, not only that, but they should be able to tell us what we can postpone to a later date if we need to, if these, as Walter said, if they come in at six-figure amounts, we may be able to say, okay, what can be taken off this bid that will be more to our financial liking, so.
Gary, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, Walter was dying to say this, but the warranty that CastellaCom is talking about isn't for their consulting work. It is to give advice and guide the city on setting up the warranty for the work that the contractor ultimately does.
Walter had a, was that what you wanted to say?
I was going to ask Gary if he wanted to tell it, or yeah, I wanted to.
I guess one of the questions I'd have is, is the library district, maybe for Gary or Dwight, would they be able to toss in anything towards the consulting part? Or are they just in charge of the books?
Yeah, they, we have, our agreement with them is we take care of the major repair projects on the building. We've replaced HVAC, we've worked on the elevator, we've done the roof, or worked on it. They did participate in the front entrance project, but we had a significant amount of money in that as well. So, I wouldn't imagine that they would be throwing any money in. The building essentially is our responsibility.
Wayne?
And we still own it.
Right, right.
Questions probably more for Gary, I think, if he can even answer it, and it's what you just now said. Why does the city own that building?
Well, we had, the library was part of the city of Moscow system till the early '90s, at which time there was a vote, and a library district was formed. So, now we have the Latah County Free Library District, I think is the official name. And as part of our participation, and it's repeated out in, I think, Potlatch, Troy, all the smaller towns, that they continue to get buildings and locations to operate, but the library operations are done through the district. So, our participation is the donation, if you will, of the library building for them to operate out of. But understand that we used to pay for the entire operation.
Books and all.
Everything. Walter?
Just to follow up that, Gary, we don't have a budget item for cash to the library district?
No.
No, that's a, they raise a tax, so.
Bill?
Wait, I'll let you do it.
Well, I'd make a motion that we approve the proposal for professional services with CastellaCom Architects of Lewiston in the amount of $13,530.68, and to have this monies be taken from general fund buildings and grounds, and the amount that was not spent on the roof at the pool that was held out from that.
I'll second.
Okay, John made a motion to approve the proposal by professional services of CastellaCom Architects of Lewiston, Idaho, in the amount of $13,530.68, for assessing the conditions, specifications, and to get this money from the building funds, general fund building funds, $9,800 of the balance in the fund capital projects fund, and the remaining portion for what was not used on the pool. Everybody clear? I'll start with Walter.
Do you have to? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Unenthusiastic aye.
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 Okay. Thank you.
It is passed on a six-to-zero vote. Now Gary will move on to item number six, which is Strategic Planning Update by Gary.
I'm going to have just a second here.
Okay.
Okay, and this won't be any news to most of the council, except those that were playing hooky in Hawaii.
The rest of us can leave.
But I'm sure he was, he was here in spirit.
You did get my comments, though, right?
Yes, sir. Okay. So, for the benefit of the public, we thought we would, and in view of the abbreviated agenda tonight, we thought we'd go through the strategic planning process very briefly, as this is acting as kind of the springboard of future decision-making, hopefully by the city council, depending upon the acceptance of annual strategic planning sessions. This is our first time in more than 12 years that we've undertaken strategic planning. Strategic planning was done in 2002, in a little different format. It was more of a plan-to-make-a-plan, and we spent the last 12 years developing those plans at great expense to the city. We've done so through grants, we've done so through general fund, we've done so through our enterprise funds. Strategic planning process is designed to assist the city in meeting the challenges of the future, and helps establish clear objectives and to sustain the vitality of the community. A consultant was selected to assist us with that process. That's Dr. John Luthy of the Futures Corporation in Boise. The mayor and I visited Dr. Luthy probably about a year and a half ago, darn close to it, negotiated an agreement with him, and he began actively assisting us in August of 2014. So, the timeline that we participated in, October 1st was the beginning of the process when Dr. Luthy came, started off with kickoff meetings to talk to us about what strategic planning was. He had kickoff meetings for the staff, for operations teams. Each department developed an operations team, or identified an operations team. Then they also had, worked with the city council, to orient the city council on the benefits of strategic planning. Once that was done, and this was kind of a excursion that we hadn't anticipated, and that is operational overviews. Operational overviews are a review of what each department in the city actually does. And part of that purpose of that exercise is, as you are developing, excuse me, your strategic plans, you need to have an idea of the work you are doing to determine how much of your time you can take from other projects in order to do an effective job. So, these operations overviews took a couple of months to draft, and those were distributed at the city council meeting. They are probably 90 to 95 percent done. They described what is being done in each department, and we also tried to identify metrics or measurements by which we can gauge progress being made, and how we know if the job is being done. That was completed in December of 2014, for the most part, although redrafting continued into the new year. Strategic plan issues were drafted, and they were due March 4th, at which time they're called major challenge areas. And those were things that each department identified within their own strategic planning process as being what they see as the major challenges, whether it is, we don't have enough staff, or we aren't able to raise the funding that we need to develop parks, or the streets are deteriorating, we don't have the means by which to fix them in a manner which, replace infrastructure in a way which is reasonable, so that it doesn't all ball up at the end, and we end up not being able to keep the city's assets in good shapes. So, those were forwarded to the city council as major challenge areas. And once those issues were identified, council looked at them in the order of all the things that you see up here. What is the impact of the major challenge area? And let me preface that by saying, as these were forwarded to the city council, the city council then rated them individually, and then all of those ratings were compiled, and those are what we talked about last week, when Dr. Luthy was again in Moscow. Last Tuesday, we had our strategic planning rating session. So, these are the criteria. The impact of the challenge area, the magnitude, how big is it? Is it something that we can expect? Is going to be something that's going to take our attention? Or is it something that is going to pass very quietly and won't be a huge issue? Pervasiveness, is it something that affects the entire community, or a significant segment of the community? Threat level, if the major challenge area, if the challenge comes to pass, what is going to be the impact or the threat to the community? Is it going to happen more than once? Is it once in a lifetime? Is it once every two years? Is it once every five years? Are these short or long-term challenges? Are they things that we'll be able to handle within a budget year? Are they things like deteriorating sewer system that we need to fund over a period of 20 to 30 years? Can we control it, or is it something that's just going to happen? For instance, you can have crises or natural disasters. We have no control over those. All we can control is the response. Implementation timing, at what point should you do this? It's a little bit like the library discussion we just had. Do we continue to allow it to deteriorate, and then it'll be a bigger issue? Or is it something that we ought to start on, either accumulating money, or at least finding how big the breadbox is by obtaining the services of a consultant? And lastly, how do these fit into the long-term community vision? Obviously, you as the city council are the conscience of the community, and you set the guidance and the direction that the city goes forward. City staff takes your direction in development of the annual budget, and we come back and ask for direction throughout the year. So, we look for your interpretation of the community's wants and needs. This is really hard to read, but you have it in your packets. These are the external and internal challenge areas. They, the ones that you saw last Tuesday, have the individual ratings from each of the council members. Those are available, if anybody wants them. They are a public document. However, this is the compilation. So, as you read down through those, tier three, which would be those that are closest to the numeral three, in a descending order, in order of importance to the city council as they individually rated these. Again, these are Again, these are major challenge areas that are identified by the departments that work in those areas, and they are not just things that staff came up with. They are things that we are working with the council on, have worked with the council on, continue to work with the council on, or things that we try to address every year, but we just don't have the resources to deal with in a manner which we think we would like to in order to keep the material usable. So on top, you can see the external challenge area that was considered to be the most major is deteriorating pavement conditions. And as I indicated last Tuesday, with all the work that's being done in the federal government with the Grow America Plan, which is being promoted by DOT Secretary Anthony Fox, and the, our own Idaho Legislature debating how to fund deteriorating roads and bridges in the state of Idaho last year, and came up about two-thirds short of what they had hoped that they would, at the beginning of the session, be able to put toward it. Now, there was a plan that was put forward, and we will be receiving some increased tax funding or state funding for roads, but still, it's significantly less. You've heard Tyler Palmer talk about he needs $800 to $1 million a year, just as a beginning to maintain the roads. That isn't taking into account construction of new roads, major repairs, so on and so forth. So just descending order, I could spend, as you all have, you've heard from staff, you've debated among yourselves, we talked about it ad nauseam last week. So there are three tiers in each, external and internal categories. You can tell by the subtle shading of the bands up on the board, but as you know, we have, like anybody, our own household incomes included, we have limited resources, and it is up to the city council to prioritize which projects those resources will be expended upon. So just wanted to show the public that this is the format of strategic planning that we are proceeding with. It's a little late in this budget process to take it piecemeal, address each of these issues, but I will guarantee you that they're probably 90 percent of these are being addressed in one fashion or another in the development of the FY 2016 budget, just as they were addressed maybe in about the same percentage in past budgets. These are the issues that have been discussed with council, and council has pointed out over the past several years. So next year, hopefully, we will have even a better systematic approach in the development of the budget so that we can address these and be able to show the council, okay, how do we show progress toward addressing these? Some of them, as you can see up there, deteriorating pavement conditions, it isn't like the city has a couple of million dollars a year to put toward fixing the streets. We will have to be creative, we'll have to reprioritize, and it isn't going to be something that one fell swoop, we're going to take care of it, and then we don't have to think about it again. Like anything else, it's something that you're going to have to address year to year, and we hope, hopefully, have a plan in order to proceed with that. In the internal, you have the same thing. You've got law enforcement staffing. If you recall that one, that had to do with wanting an additional cyber investigator in order to deal with some of the internet crimes that are being done. So that was high on the priority list, and again, it is being addressed in this year's budget, and the council ultimately will be the ones to say whether that is in or that is out, just as everything up here is listed. So with that, that is a document that is available and will be on the, on the city's website, and we will proceed with addressing that in this coming and future budgets. So with that, I want to take the opportunity to say that this project is not complete. We continue to work on departmental strategic plans. As Dr. Luthy indicated, these are not intuitive. It takes a little bit of rethinking. Usually, our goal-setting process in the past has been annual, if not two or three years in advance. We're seeing the need, I think, as the council has, that we need to address these issues on a long-term basis. One of the last plans that we are putting together at this point is, there's only two that have to be finished up. One is the facilities plan. The other is the long-range financial plan, which will then take these needs, all that these plans have determined, and then say, well, those are needs, this is what, these are the financial resources you have to address those. How do you want, how do you want to address them?
Water conservation.
Excuse me?
Water conservation plan. Is it finished?
Yes, you're right, exactly. It's being reviewed right now by the Sustainable Environment Commission. You're right. But we have probably, what, I'll bet another 10 plans that have been completed. So anyway, we're moving ahead, but I want to thank the council for setting us down this path. I want to thank the staff for the many, many hours that has been spent on this project and the commitment to getting something to the council that hopefully you can look at and determine, okay, how do we rate these? Are we making progress? What direction do we need to do to make sure that we're well-positioned in the future for the community?
Thank you, Gary, for that update. Does anybody have questions for Gary before I turn them loose? Walter?
If I may, Gary, is there a chance that when we are given the budget, that we would get a report on what funds are being proposed in the 2016 budget to address which of these line items?
Absolutely. One of the things, and that's a good question, we've tried in past budgets, as you know, when we have a council goal, we try within our narratives, and our budget is fairly readable. It's thick, but it's readable.
I'm asking about a listing, which would make it much easier for us.
And going through each line item.
Well, no, a list, this listing.
Sure.
And showing what the proposal is in the budget presented to us of how many dollars toward which line.
Certainly.
Or something.
Sure.
Where we can try to tie this list that we've acted on to the budget.
Yeah, I don't see any, any problem with doing that. And I think, you know, there have been times in the past, as you know, that there is a council goal, the budget's developed, and the council goal may not be included in the budget. We've always provided an explanation and said this, we were unable to fund this because of a certain reason.
I don't expect you to put money against every one of these.
Got it.
I just would like to have some idea of.
You bet.
What money's going towards.
And some of those things, there will be nothing that goes towards it. We'll make sure everybody knows that, too.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll do that in the introductory part, Walter, in July.
Yeah, hopefully, it'll make the process a lot more transparent and understandable.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, appreciate it.
With that, I'll move on to reports. Dan, I'll start with you.
Well, there was no administrative committee meeting because all that got moved to the Public Works and Finance Committee.
You're welcome.
And I have no other reports.
Okay, Art.
Fair and affordable housing met on the 7th, and there was a discussion on the workshop on the path to homeownership. People were pretty happy with what they learned there about how to buy a new home for first-time homebuyers, but they decided that the next big push there was going to be to approach U of I staff and try to bring in more staff from the university who are on that cusp position of being able to afford a house, but they maybe don't quite know how to go about it. So they're going to go forward with that. There was fair housing training that went on that was attended by 40-plus people, and they learned a fair bit about that. A lot of it had to do with landlords and tenants and what to do with service animals, things like that, and also how to better educate students for handling, signing leases for the first time in their lives, what's the pluses and minuses, what's expected of them, what's expected from the landlord. So they're progressing with that as well. On another note, we had the Urban Renewal Agency meeting last week, and it was very much associated with housekeeping for that one, introducing the agency to the new administrative person, Bill Belknap, taking over as the executive director, replacing our very own Gary Redner, who heaved a sigh of relief. And the agency is proceeding with all kinds of other priorities. Alturus getting it ready for its final closeout by the end of this year, and the direction that the agency is going to take subsequent to that. And so those are the two I had. Sustainable Environment doesn't meet this month for lack of quorum, because everybody fled town here, and they're meeting next week, and nobody's going to be around.
Okay, Walter.
Thank you, Mayor. I chaired the Public Works Finance Committee, the only committee to meet last Monday, and everything in that agenda, action item, was on tonight's agenda. We also got some reports from staff on construction projects that anticipated this summer, the, an update on IT's work toward moving us to a different agenda management software system. We have been on the one we're currently on for three years, four years?
Since 2010, I mean.
2010, and I, although I've finally kind of learned how to work it, I understand the staff is not totally thrilled with it, and we're moving toward a better system. So that will be something that will be upcoming. Kathleen Burns gave us an update on the Farmers Market, which started the first part of May and has been amazingly well-attended. The first two weekends were probably because the sun was shining, the birds were singing, and it was a great temp. And then this past weekend, it was a little cool, it was cloudy, and it was still well-attended. So, so far, so good. I attended the Fire Department Board Meeting on the night of the 11th, Monday, the 11th. Nothing remarkable to, to mention there, except I did take the opportunity to thank them for their service, to thank them for the good response times that I seem to be seeing and hearing and telling them that the reason that I jumped to do that is to deliver a report to the council, the activities that they are performing on the city's behalf. The night of the 12th, I attended a branding, what I call branding workshop downtown with the mayor, with Gary, President Staben, several of his staff, Gina Truccio. The consultants presented us with a plethora of possible themes, some of which got our attention, others we really didn't care for. So that process is continuing. I have encouraged Ms. Truccio to push the consultants to set a next date, so we can keep that moving forward. I attended the.
Along with Art.
I think. You were at the single.
Meeting with the apartment owners.
Mm-hmm.
On Wednesday, the 13th.
Very, very little in the way of questions from that group, not maybe as well-attended by property managers as staff had hoped, but they'll be contacting them directly. Questions answered, explanations made about how the system's going to work, and I understand that the letters have gone out to all utility billing customers regarding the fact that Single Stream is coming and asking them to reply with their name, address, and selection of their cart size that they wish to have delivered to them. Tim Davis, the Solid Waste Manager, indicates, hopefully, probably the end of August, early part of September, we'll see the rollout of that, so to speak. On the night of the 14th, I attended the New St. Andrews graduation at the Nazarene Church. It's very, very well-attended in terms of just total bodies. It's always impressive to go see that, although small school, turn out such, such great graduates, and to be reminded how many of them bring parents and siblings to live in Moscow and to help our economy. And then on the night of the 15th of the month, I attended the president's U of I commencement dinner, heard the commencement speaker give a short talk, saw some awards handed out, had a good opportunity to speak to some of our other elected officials, and a very, very nice event, and the university is getting it done, and Art was there, too.
And there were also representatives from the federal office holders from the state as well.
Correct. So that's what I've got. Thank you.
Good enough. Well, Wayne, you were aloha. I don't know if you have anything to add here, but you were.
Well, not to, not what I did last week. Thank you, Walter, for chairing Public Works and Finance for me.
My pleasure.
For taking the third seat since I was gone. I didn't have any meetings last week, obviously, that I was able to attend. One that the mayor and I both attended, though, on Friday, the 8th, which was a lot of fun, was the Logos mock jury trial, which they're doing quite well in North Carolina right now. I haven't heard the final outcome on them, but generally speaking, on a yearly basis, they're our state champions. This was, this was a lot of fun. Other than that, tomorrow, we've got a Smart Transit meeting, which I'll, of course, be attending, and then also on Thursday, I'll be going to Lewiston for the Clearwater Economic Development Association Operations and Finance Committee meeting. That's pretty much all I've got.
Okay, Jim?
The Transportation Commission met this Tuesday, and the crux of that meeting was downtown bicycle park, parking issues, and staff presented a number of diagrams that showed where people are parking bicycles, where people are parking bicycles illegally, and how effective, and how well-attended the racks are that are down there now. They showed pictures of the new bicycle corral that's on Main Street just north of Third, or on Main just north of Third, that should help out with Farmers Market bicycle parking. And there were a number of ideas presented about how we can, how they can add to that with portable bicycle parking for Farmers Market. There seem to be, the crux of the, of the illegal bicycle parking seems to be downtown in the Friendship Square area, where people are chained into trees and signs and have things kind of out in the walkway where they shouldn't be. So probably more, more bicycle racks will be placed downtown in that area. That's the crux of that meeting.
John?
Planning and zoning on May 13th, and four items of note. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the plan unit development, which is generally located north of Palouse River Drive and West Sunnyside Avenue. The other thing that they approved was the preliminary subdivision plat for properly, generally located directly north of Palouse River Drive and West Sunnyside Avenue, which is in the Prospect Place addition. And they held a public hearing having to do with the window opening requirements and off-street parking in the new.
Legacy crossing.
Yeah, the new.
Legacy crossing.
Thank you. Legacy, legacy crossing, and that was recommended to send the amendment to the council, which they will do. There was also a public hearing on Title IV, Chapter III of the Moscow City Code regarding outdoor uses within commercial zoning districts. That will also recommend, it was recommended to send that to the council, so we'll see that. And then the last thing they dealt with was the City of Moscow floodplain ordinance, and this is a required amendment that has to be looked at periodically. This is the time that it needs to be looked at. And what it does, more than anything else, it may or may not affect the flood insurance or your property insurance, the flood insurance part of it, that you have to have if you've got a mortgage on your house. And so that is going to be looked at more closely, and then it will eventually come to the city council. Other than that?
Okay. May 8th, as Wayne had mentioned, him and I were judge, well, were in the jury for the Logos School, and that was quite a participation by those kids. I'll tell you what, it was amazing, and some of the information I've got, those kids have won state 16 different years, and they're back east, Charlotte, wasn't it, Charlotte, North Carolina, South Carolina?
This year.
Yeah, and they're competing, and I'm telling you about those kids, it was absolutely amazing to watch that. I was very, very impressed with that. Walter had mentioned on May the 12th, him and myself and Gary were at our branding meeting, and that worked out pretty well, and the fire is continuing with that, and so we're looking forward to how that carries us. I was in Boise for AIC board meetings on May the 14th and 15th. I was in Boise for AIC board meetings on May the 14th and 15th, and that was a really terrific two-day session that we had there. We've got new leadership in AIC, Seth Gregg is our executive director, and he seems to be pulling the board much closer. The board, in my view, seemed like it needed some work to come, and this was kind of a working session these two days, worked very hard. We've got our upcoming annual convention in Boise, the 10th, 11th, and 12th of June, and for the first time ever, we're going to have a mayor's session in that convention as well as a council convention, so counselors can go to council convention, mayors can go to the mayor convention and the sessions, and that's the first time they've ever done that, is my understanding. I think that's absolutely going to be terrific so that bodies, that people can get together. One of the important things for AIC, for folks to understand, there's, out of the 200 cities in the state of Idaho, there's 184 of them that belong to the Association of Idaho Cities, which is 1,200 active members.
What was the date of that again, John?
Association of Idaho Cities.
The date?
10, 11, 12.
June 10, 11, and 12.
10, 11.
And-
Who else planning to go?
Well, I'm going, Jim, John, you are going. And so, there's going to be four of us, as well as staff, Gary will be there as well. But the interesting thing about this is, one of the things we can do is we can suggest to the legislators and be a little bit more proactive prior to the legislative season that we all enjoyed in February, March, and hopefully give some of these folks a nice direction. Now, I got to share something. Our two representatives, Troy and Jordan, did us, I thought, a very, very good job, as well as Senator Smith. Those three people were right on board with the needs and what we wanted and stuff. Now, there are others in our state that clearly needed some guidance, and so hopefully, hopefully, our 1,200-strong membership can help some of those-
Make the correct decision.
-folks along. So, with that, I will turn it over to Gary.
Thank you. We had our monthly breakfast meeting with the school district, University of Idaho, Leito County, last week, and shared some ideas. We're also having an informal workshop with the Leito County Commissioners on their city impact is the general subject, the sole subject, and that'll occur in this room on June 2nd from 11:30 to 1:30.
So, about invites, please.
Yes, they will be. There'll be an agenda come out on that. It is an official meeting, so we'll get that out. With that, I don't have a whole lot else.
One more thing.
Okay, Dan?
Congratulations to our Moscow Bear baseball team for being district champs this year and coming in fourth down at state this year.
First-year coach Lance Abendraff.
That's right.
Good for him. I would look for a motion there, Jim.
I'll entertain you with such a motion.
I'd second that one.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose. Adjourn at 7:57, folks, thank you.